Okay, we'll call the board to regular session. We stand for pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item number two, executive session. I ask for a motion to have a brief executive session.
Second.
Okay. All right, if that convenes you, a brief executive session.
Second.
Linda?
Someone?
Hi. May, may?
Yeah.
Yeah, you may. Mike Alvo?
Yes.
Joe Pialdea?
Yes.
Norah?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Number three, approval of minutes. Regular meeting minutes of the July eighth G-OrD meeting. Motion?
Motion.
For discussion. Motion. Second.
Linda?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Norah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Yes.
Personal items for action, personal consent agenda. I recommend the board of education approve the personnel items. Any discussion?
Could you just clarify, Marcy, with the, just for our new board members, the piece about abandoning positions, can you just explain that? Because there were quite a few, and it always shows up at the second meeting when we start.
Sure. If you already, every year we have sent out a notice to everyone to intend to return here to present job. If they do not send it back, most of them are sub-aids. They either accept a full-time position here or somewhere else. We send a second notice out. If they do not respond to that second notice that they intend to or do not intend to return, we have to take them as an abandonment of position.
That refers to our substitute teachers?
Correct.
Our retirees that come back for sub? Our aides?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So you need a motion, right?
Yes.
Someone?
Second. Discussion?
Linda?
Yeah.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Norah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Okay. Treasure report. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the treasurer's report as presented. The motion?
Someone? Second.
Discussion?
That's for the board. Do you want to take the question anywhere?
Okay. Okay, so five to one.
Five to four.
Through five to four.
Yep.
Someone?
In second, Linda? Okay, Linda?
Aye.
Mike?
Yes.
Joe?
Aye.
Norah?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Okay, and some of the side of this for action. Transportation requests for rural schools. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the transportation request. Six point one. The motion?
Someone?
Second.
It's a, because it's considered, it's, all of them.
So, no?
Now, separate one for each one. Unless you want to make them separate.
Okay, so again, you can say.
Yep.
So six point one and six point two?
Yes.
Someone? Norah?
Oh, Norah.
Sorry.
Linda?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Norah? John?
Yes.
Okay, President's Report. I just have something that I wanted to review with board. In terms of being aware of how we get stuff on the agenda and the timeline that we've come up with. I went with Bob and Cory last week, or actually two weeks ago. And the timeline will be, we're going to leave two weeks out. Two weeks before each board meeting, start to create the agenda. That'll be Cory, Bob, Mike, and myself. One week out, that agenda will go to the board. We should have got this board agenda a week ago. We'll have time to add, as we're going to add it, a topic of discussion. That will be reviewed and then finalized on the Friday prior to board meeting, which will be published to the public. So I would ask, I would invite you to continue to keep everybody in the chain of emails for conversation and discussion. I think that prevents siphoning off the group. Everyone's on the same page. Everyone sees what the concerns are. Topics that come from the public or from employees, we go through Cory. Cory will filter those who have discussions two weeks out about what will make the agenda more well.
And you're still accessible by phone, Joe? There's five questions?
Yeah, I, phone is, is a good thing. I just think that, I think what happened in the past, not just here, I think in general, sometimes conversations occur and they're isolated, and some important topics come up. I just want to make sure that if we act as a body, everybody is aware of what those topics of discussion are. I would ask maybe if there's an email admission, and then follow-up phone calls? Just so we know that what's on the topic, and what people are having conversations about.
My other question is about, you know, the discussion that goes along with emails. We just have to be cautious that we're not making any decisions as a board. We're supposed to do it in front of the public. So, okay. Thank you.
I think when we had the attorney here last, at the last board, we asked her about conversations or discussions or topics that she encouraged us to do it as a call, as opposed to...
Absolutely.
Any questions about that?
No.
In terms of agenda?
Counselor has to schedule, thank you, Joe.
That'll give the school district time to get documentation and any information together to present and to go. That'll give the school district time to get documentation and any information together to present and to go along with the agenda.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report, is it ready?
Yeah. So I hope so. We have a bit here tonight. I'm going to bring in Mark Schuber, who's from Marathon Health. And just to give you a little bit of the background. Mark and his company, Manham Los Angeles School District and Levaux County School District have been meeting over the past several months. We're both in the healthcare system with high deductible plans. So we're working with this partner. He's going to talk to you a little bit about the idea or thought around a, a shared clinic of services and the benefits of that for obviously the employees and also for the taxpayers as well. So I'm going to try to get Mark out of here with us. There's also Christina Braga from E&amp;B, who does a lot of work through the party work from that kind of trip. Yeah. Bill, you want to go ahead and pull on him, Mike? I just, I know you've got a couple of quick things in terms of graduation next year and...
Regents days.
Regents days.
Um, basically, hi, everybody. Welcome to board members. I haven't gotten a chance to meet all of you yet. So basically with regents, obviously, as you're starting to see, obviously, those work in other school districts and see, Regents week is now no longer a week. When you look at the actual schedule and what Bosie puts out for a final schedule for the year as well, it stretches our students well into the end of June. And it's not going to change anytime soon. And when you look at just the June region schedule alone, it's over two weeks now. You also have to factor in with some of the next generation standards that we see. We're also seeing changes of exams that they push to the beginning of June, which could be the past couple of years. It's been a day for us that's impacted us for students. This year, we're going to see two different days that's going to impact a large population of our kids. And then obviously, in January, those of you who were here last year, we're going into our third year of moving the English regions back to January. It's been very successful and our success rate has been huge year to year over the past now two years going into our third year. So basically, I'd like to, and I talked to Cory, but I wanted to at least put it under radar to understand, we'd like to move forward with regents-only days on certain days of those times between January and then June and obviously the early June exams as well. Mainly because it's a strain on our kids trying to manage a regular school day, then step out and take a regents exam. The other aspect of it is it puts a real, real strain on our special ed department. When you start factoring in accommodations, putting them all over the bill, exam on top of it, trying to give their normal accommodations required for students in the classroom that aren't taking regents exams. It, it's been a struggle. We've managed it for years, but now with the next generation standards and them requiring that exams be taken at certain points, we just don't have the staff, when you factor in aides and our special ed department to run exams, give accommodations, and also run a regular school day. I, I just wanted to put that under radar that I'll continue to work with Cory to talk about what days we would need that are necessity. I'm not looking for every day in January. And obviously, in June, as we dismiss our regular school day, that'll be normal still. But I know we're going to probably need some of those in January. We're also going to need some at the beginning of June because we're going to see earth science, new standards, and testing biology, which is another big exam that takes pretty much a whole grade level. And on top of it, this year, we're going to see geometry on an additional day. So those are big exams that take up pretty much an entire grade level of kids, not counting in the students that are going to retake exams. So I just wanted to keep that on your radar, something to think about because I think it benefits our kids and not feeling the stress of having two things at once, but also helps our staff as well. The other thing, oh, yeah, go ahead.
I'd say if I had kids that aren't taking it on that day, it's still...
So it, when we say regents-only day, it would essentially be any students who had exams will come in and we worked that out with transportation. One of the things that I've worked with Dr. Green on is when we have done that over the past few years, our teachers have done a fantastic job setting up review sessions. Also make up time. We've had busloads and transportation does great with that. Our grade levels pretty much give us a list of kids they still want to see that aren't taking exams. And we either bus those kids in or families have dropped them off. But we have some stay for an A.M. session and a P.M. session even when they don't have exams. So we'd like to continue that too. That way, we could still feed kids and also prepare them and get them caught up, especially if they're behind, to try and make sure it's not a, a day where we don't have a lot of kids in the building too. Good question.
Is there been any discussion about the graduation being backed up a little bit like some of the other school districts did this past year?
So that, yeah, that was actually one of the things I brought to Cory really towards the end of the school year, this past school year. I talked to some Syracuse City schools, Liverpool being one of them, and also some Cortland schools. And because, same thing, when we start talking now graduation with the schedule that we're given, personally, I, I felt it more this year more than any other year. We're holding our seniors hostage. They are done on June, anywhere between 12th, 13th, 14th. And they're in limbo waiting for about two weeks before graduation. When in reality, they don't need to, in my opinion. Yes, there's, there might be a couple of kids, nine through 12, that might have a physics exam that last week. So it might carry into that. But in reality, our kids who are taking physics, which is usually that last exam, they're not in jeopardy of any sort of graduation issue. And they are going to come and, and test and take the exam. But it's a good question. I, I felt it a lot from the kids. We have such momentum between prom, class trip. It's positive momentum and then it's the last day of regular classes ends. And we don't see them for two weeks. And I, I think they feel like, I want to get going. I want to start that next chapter. I want to, you know, get into some other things. And they feel like it's that weight game of now almost two weeks until graduation.
That's two years in a row we've had very late...
It's, yeah. And it's not going to change anytime soon. So I'm also asking if it's something you'd be interested in looking at. Like I said, I've talked to some other schools in neighboring areas that are already doing it. But if you look at the calendar for this current school year, if we moved our graduation up a week early, like I said, a small population of juniors, a couple seniors that might have tests that next week, the possibility of moving graduation up, it would be June, that Friday would be June 20th. 20th, right? Yes. As something to think about for our seniors and families and kind of keep that momentum in a positive way. But I'd like to propose that to you to think about as a board to say, you know, is this something we'd be interested in doing as well? Like I said, I've heard about it, talked to some schools and they said they've had really positive feedback, so.
We have some local schools do that, correct?
What's that?
Didn't we have some local school districts do that?
So we, we really did. I was talking to a couple of schools in our area, Broom, Ty, Open Bosie's. And we were talking about it at the end of the year. A lot of them saying, you know, should we start thinking about it? So I figured, why not talk about it now and have that discussion?
Okay. Thank you.
So ideally by the next meeting, obviously, is August 1-6. If you're comfortable with that, then what we'd like to do is go communicate that as soon as possible. Obviously, we have families that come from a long ways away. We want to give them enough time to prepare. And obviously, you know, we have seniors in the room and parents who are already probably planning graduation parties. So quicker we can get that out.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
I mean, is there anyone who would be the scenario we can look at if we push it back a week or whatever? Anyone who's in jeopardy of that graduation?
Nope. In, in reality, if we have seniors, because obviously, that's on myself, Mr. Muklis, our guidance office, we gather our pool of students and we check in with them month to month. So in reality, does it change the, the approach before the end of the fourth quarter? Yeah, it'll slightly adjust our timeline of things. But no, we're, we're, we're getting them there without a concern of where am I at by graduation day? Good question.
Okay. Thank you.
I think about it. I'm okay.
I'm okay too.
Yeah.
So you make a motion? A motion to move it up at least?
A week? Yeah.
20th?
I mean, technically, it's not really on you. It's just, you don't really, oh, it's just, if you're comfortable with it, we'll move forward.
I'll, I'll work with, obviously, Mr. McAvoy and everyone else to make sure our families, community members, everyone's aware. So that's, that's a change that happens immediately and people are going to find it advanced.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, buddy.
Thank you.
Okay. So I believe we have our guests here, Mark Schuber and Christina Braga, who are going to present. I believe Mark's going to talk a bit. I'm going to... Hey, guys, how are you? Mark, do you hear me? I can, but for some reason, you're not believing you are.
This thing won't work.
Does it work right now? Well, it's okay.
Well? What's that? No, I think it's cool.
Can you turn it on? Can you turn that on? That mic?
Up there. Maybe go back to some forty sound.
Is this one?
Yeah.
I don't know. Turn it on.
Give us enough. We'll figure it out. We have students here, so we're just checking what we're doing. Cory? Can you keep talking, Mark? Yeah, just keep talking. He's good at that, isn't he? I've heard it a couple of times. Let me try to...
I would try to get off of Apple TV and hook in through our laptop.
Yeah, Mark, I'm going to try to go through HDMI because our Apple TV is down.
It's on again.
Mark, let's try it now. Can you hear me up there?
I think these are all the man.
So we're going to hold on you for a minute and we're going to kind of move forward with the, the next phase of our meeting and see if we can get this figured out. Okay? I'll keep, I'll let you know. All right.
Hi, guys. Again, welcome. Thank you, new board members as well. Thanks for having us. This will be fairly quick. I know there's been a topic around mixed competition and some changing of the regulations behind it. It would affect obviously some of the people that are in this room, so probably don't want to hear about that. We were at our law conference on Thursday. And to be completely honest with you, what I just handed you guys is really the most up-to-date information we have. The attorneys stood in front of us and one of the topics that they said is a very hot topic and they are waiting to be able to discuss is mixed competition. They don't really have a lot of answers at the moment, but they are waiting. There is some executive meetings with lawmakers and things in September. And that's going to, I think, help drive the conversation as to where it goes. The letter that I just showed you guys, I'm not sure if you've seen it or not before, but it's the Council of School Superintendents and the U.S. Board Association. Basically, for you to understand, what they are trying to propose or change is authorizing boys who identify as boys to play on girls' teams. So currently, it states in this Southern New York State Public High School Athletic Association handbook, it states that school districts can decline to permit this based on a panel, mixed competition, to then say, you know, there's an adverse effect that this student is going to have on a female sport. The regulation is instead, what they are trying to change to is to say, the proposed regulation would provide schools must ensure students of different genders be able to play full on team select and progress regardless of gender. So the question you are probably asking is how would that impact OACSD? And how that would impact us is you have sports such as volleyball. You have sports such as field hockey, flight football. And for some reason, regents has put softball and baseball as a singular sport. So softball would also be a sport that they could choose to play. That's really where it's sitting right now. That's the impact it could have on us. According to the letter that I just put in front of you, no superintendents and no school boards are advocating for this change. Again, as I said on Thursday at the updated law conference, the first thing they said is we're kind of in limbo like a lot of you are right now. And as soon as we have more information and guidance, we'll be able to answer more questions for you and, and kind of see where this goes in the September meeting that they're going to have. Obviously, it could have an impact on our students here and across the state.
So can I ask, Ryan, who at the state level is pushing this?
Lawmakers. It came from lawmakers.
Our legislators.
Yeah.
So there's another example where we need to talk to our legislators more about what our desire is as a district. So we know who they are.
And I believe, I reached out to our section executive director and they met last week, all the sessions. And it was, it was a topic I think they were going to talk about. Dr. Zayas, who is the director of NISBA. We did receive an email a few weeks ago saying that there was going to be a letter from them as well, probably similar to this. I haven't received it yet, but I do know that Phil Bryant from Second Four was going to inquire about it to try to get some information for us to find out, you know, what this means. But again, I, I keep beating myself here. We're kind of going to stand still. Nothing has moved. We don't yet.
And I know NISBA doesn't support the CEA, the School Boards Association, as well as the Council of Superintendents. And we can contact our county representatives as well as Broom County representatives. So whether we're standing for this. Well, thank you. I can't sing.
I don't worry. I love it. I want to be sure. So I guess, you know, I know I was brought up as, you want some information on it. This is the most up-to-date information I have. Obviously, the attorney said that when we give more information, I will certainly be willing to share that with you and then, you know, a conversation of what it looks like. Hopefully, there's no change and then we can navigate this however we feel best. I will certainly be willing to share that with you and then, you know, a conversation of what it looks like, hopefully there's no change and then we can navigate this however we feel best as our students.
Well, they just recently gave us the 2024-25 position statement, and I'm pretty sure, I'm almost positive that they're not supporting that legislation.
I have not heard any support, so that's.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Keep us up to date.
Yep, any questions further, just let me know, we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, I think we've got it figured out. Awesome. Perfect, so I'm gonna turn you here so you can kind of see the rest of the board, so I'm looking. Very good, hello all. So Cory, did you want to make any opening remarks? And then just also with the timing, wanted to see how much time to have for this portion of the discussion.
Yes, so I allowed you to be able to share your screen, so if you have your presentation, you want to share that. I did just feel a little preemptive that we've been having conversations for several months now. Obviously, we're always looking at different ways of, you know, where there's savings for the school district and also employees. We moved to these, this health plan a couple of years ago and it's yielded some really good results so far, so really pleased with what it's done. And this is just another layer and, you know, obviously, working with Christina closely and her connecting us with Mark to share this information of kind of the next steps maybe, but we wanted to bring it to the board so that you had an idea of some of the conversations that have been happening with other school districts. So I'll turn it over to you, Mark, if you're ready.
Very, very good, everyone can see my screen, I think I actually can see it up there.
Yep.
On the screen, do that. So, thank you all for the opportunity to address you this evening, I'm Mark Schubert with Marathon Health. Really my role and responsibility for working with employer partners such as the school district to explore this new model of direct primary care, health centers, clinics. So really, in our time together this evening, what I'm hopeful we can accomplish is to provide an overview of Marathon Health. It's a very different model than what officially experienced in terms of the health insurance, it's a whole other species. We'll go through, you know, why we exist as an organization, the care delivery and the services that the members receive, so in this case, the employees plus all their spouses and dependents. We have a proposal for the district, again, everything we've been talking about is being a potential shared health center opportunity with a end well to the district. So you'll see that the financials are put in that context, that they split between the two districts to build on this potential center together. Talking about the savings that these health centers produce, we've actually done a return on investment study for the district, we'll highlight that. I'll talk a little bit about real estate, really where you put these health centers out in the community, we have a sophisticated way for how we position that. And then dovetail into kind of what are our next steps, obviously, you all are gonna have more conversation about this, but to Cory's point, we wanted to bring this to the board, provide an overview and talk about, you know, potential next steps with the model. I realize that a lot of this is to do, right, this is a different type of model, one that folks aren't as used to. So please feel free to stop and be active with the students, you like your questions, so you can end that part as, I'm gonna answer your questions while we have this time. So the first thing is, what are you saying, well, what do we need a health center for, right? We've got all these, we've got insurance, we've got, you know, care out in the community. But I think, you know, more and more of us are realizing, you know, the communities we live in, there truly is a lack of access to primary care and mental health care. For this, we, you know, may have gone a little while without going to primary care and trying to find a provider that's accepting new patients in a timely fashion. It's very challenging for folks, we have a primary care shortage, you know, not only in New York State, but across the country. And in addition, trying to find mental health care, so when folks are struggling with anxiety, depression, et cetera, even harder to find care. You know, a lot of the providers are in such demand that they will only take self-pay and, you know, that's not affordable for a lot of folks. So, you know, again, just general lack of access to primary mental health care is something that we solve for in our model. You all as a self-funded employer, you pay the claims when your folks go out and use care out in the community. And, you know, my whole career, we've been working with employers on ways to reduce their annual insurance increases. Now we have folks six, eight, you know, we see increases above the twenty percent in our clients. What is a true strategy that will help us bend the cost of healthcare and put more of the control backward on the employer's side? Again, the health centers can be a tool to help us accomplish that attraction and retention, especially in education, you know, burnout of teachers and other staff members. Being able to put in a health center where folks and their families can go to get bill and low-cost healthcare that's provided and paid for by the district can be a very attractive benefit to help people come there and stay with them. And just a couple of other things, you know, there's all these anti-obesity GLP-1 drugs that are out there that are doing great things for folks with diabetes, you know, this population. However, you know, if the employer is funding the bill on the cost of these prescriptions, you know, the health center is going to act as a way to help hold folks accountable. So, you're not only are they taking the prescription, they're working with a medical provider to make sure their medical lifestyle changes as well, so that they get the full impact of the medication. And then lastly, you know, there's more and more being put in front of employers to, you know, be fiduciary in terms of how they manage their health and the cost to the employees. And so, the health centers, they are a transparency, it's a way for employers to directly purchase healthcare. And so when we have all these challenges going on as an employer, which every employer to agree is a challenge with some of these things here, you know, causes lower quality outcomes, you know, frustrated folks as they experience their healthcare, and then as an employer, you know, ever increase in healthcare, which, you know, impacts all of the business we're able to do. And so, Marathon and, you know, this health center concept serves as a comprehensive strategy to help employers combat a lot of the challenges we face. So in a health center, essentially my company, Marathon Health, we partner with an employer to literally offer a primary care, urgent care practice that folks can come into, only the employees that are part of the employer who is sponsoring this get access to the health center. So it's not just like any other doctor's office where anybody can come in based on insurance, there is no insurance for this. It's a flat, you know, fee paid monthly by the employer to give everyone access to the health center. And again, within the health center, you know, we're able to offer a state access to care for primary care, for acute care. We have labs on site, medicaid, just. Around two hundred merit prescriptions, and that's both for acute and maintenance medications, coming in with blood pressure medication. You could come in and get antibiotics for that sort of work. We're work across the population to identify those who might have chronic health conditions like diabetes, engage with those folks. And then of course, you know, we work really hard hand-in-hand with the employer to drive patient communications, marketing, engagement into the health center. As I'll share a little bit later, the savings and return on investment of these health centers come directly from the anatomy engagement, you know, folks were able to drive in the centers. Lastly, lower the cost to employees, there's not good copays or deductibles, you know, essentially folks come in and they get their care without, you know, there's no cost to them. And then, you know, we have care built in after hours, so we are able to help folks 24/7, even when their dedicated health center is in the middle. So essentially, Marathon has predated this concept of direct to employer care. As an organization, we've now got over seven hundred health centers across the US, we're very focused on the patient experience. You can see that eighty-seven plus net promoter score, that's a factor of being able to get same-day, next-day, one patient out waiting to get in to see a provider. Also, because it's only the folks that are sponsored by an employer, we have much more folks coming into the centers. And that means on average, our important times that our patients spend, thirty minutes. So we're spending more time, we have fewer patients to see, more time with the provider, that creates a better result. And then lastly, you know, as I'll highlight for you all, this model saves organizations money and essentially, how that occurs is we have the health center, got fixed monthly costs. So essentially, it does not change based on how many folks come in and use it, okay? And we're redirecting care, so instead of folks going to the emergency department, where people that don't have primary care typically show up for care, or urgent care centers, where there's a variable cost to the claim that's hitting your claims. We're driving more and more care into the health center, the fixed costs, and by rechanneled, including that cost of the care, those are where savings are created. So that compounds the time, and again, I'll highlight a little bit later on specifically, we looked at your district's claims data and have done a return, return on investment analysis. We partner with, so of the, you know, six hundred plus clients we have, over seven of them are education partners, they're like K P twelve, specifically as what I mean by that. We serve over a hundred and ninety thousand school client patients, so that's the employees, spouses, dependents. And we have a lot of success with this model, you know, things I just talked about, addressing burnout, staff support, you know, health and wellness, reducing the overall cost of care, and then being able to drive and deliver personalized care right in the health center. I think the biggest thing, you know, is partnering with K P twelve, you know, what are the things, the best practices that we can bring to the table? That's where we partner elsewhere, that can benefit your district. Again, have a plethora of experience working specifically with K P twelve that we can apply to you all as well. The member experience itself, kind of briefly, so we make it really easy for folks to get, which obviously, you have a dedicated health center. We're gonna show you how we map that out, but folks can get care in the health center. We also have an app and a little desktop platform that allows folks to schedule their appointments, get prescription refills, communicate with their doctor, and then you can even hold virtual meetings with your dedicated care, so a care team that would be hired for your specific, your main end well-specific health center, and you can see those folks virtually and in person using that, so maybe that really assesses the approach. The health center itself, we took your census data and we mapped it to a point of highest density. And so, you know, that's where we really look at how easy is it for folks to get to this health center? We have a minimum of forty hours of operational time each week, that means forty hours Monday through Friday, we even have Saturday hours. Our clients really dictate what the hours are, but even working with districts such as yourselves, you know, having earlier hours in the morning, so folks can get in before the school starts, or later hours, will stagger those hours to create as much accessibility as possible. And then on the integrated care piece, so Marathon, we actually go out and we recruit, interview and hire providers, and whether that's a medical doctor, we want to practice provider, like a nurse pack, you know, physicians, we'll add that. In terms of the providers additions that fit our perspective. In addition to, you know, the medical providers and medical assistance we put in our centers, we can also add licensed mental health clinicians, physical therapists, nurse sedenters, so on and so forth, it's really built on, built what the providers need to meet the needs of our client organization. The care within the health centers, I think the number one thing that folks always say when they come through our centers is, and this is if you, you know, put on your healthcare consumer ad. A lot of times when we go to the doctor's office, we'll go to one place for our appointment, then we have to go to our labs, then we might have to go and pick up a prescription. In this model, literally right there in our health center, we have all primary care. And again, these offices look like, you know, very modern, clean, primary care offices. Primary care is all of your annual physicals, med cell, clinic itself, you do primary care for just twelve plus. And then urgent care, so really the neat thing, you go into an urgent care center, you know, sick visits, you're sick or acute visits, you get a back cut, you can do, you know, mild stitching, so on and so forth, you can do ages two plus for urgent care. Just a couple of other things I'll mention, I talked about the dispensing and home delivery of medications, so they can really see the folks that the care they need or the prescriptions they need, walk out of the health center with it. We have literally a lab within our health centers, and so folks can go in, get their blood drawn, get, you know, lipid tests, so on and so forth, right there in the health center. And then, you know, even occupational health, we put in pre-employment drug screening, DOT physicals, push driver physicals, you can do those right out of the center. Again, making it more convenient for the client and advantage those things in-house, you can do it from four, you know, from there. This is a little bit, we're just on the virtual or in-person mental health, you'll see a little bit later in our proposal. We put in pricing for both types of models, obviously in-person, where we have licensed mental health provider would be more expensive than the virtual. But just given the amount of folks that experience challenges with mental health, we've started, you know, integrating it into our care centers. So we're screening folks for mental health, anxiety, depression, but then, you know, we build in, if the client has a desire, we literally build in, you know, our mental health services, so these are our employees, and these are some of the things that we would focus on treating. And again, you know, it's all integrated right there in the health center, so, you know, it's different from a employee assistance program in that in those, folks will get a number of sessions. In this, you know, it's not limited to a number of sessions, we're working collaboratively with a patient and a primary care provider to truly have impact on their symptoms and help them to feel better. Just wrapping up kind of, you know, the overview on Marathon and kind of our support services, how we work with our clients. So the other piece, right, you know, you can't just stand up a health center and hope that folks are gonna come in and sit even when we're offering lower no-cost care. So we really, Marathon would partner with the district and provide resources, account management, marketing, to really ensure we're collaborating, get folks in the board. And so that's everything from, so we've done a marketing playbook, launch campaign, mailings, digital assets, videos, ribbon cuttings of the health center, provider meet and greets. Those are all things we would want to offer. And then you can kind of see as we go down the line here, different things that we're gonna do, the personalized patient marketing, that comes once a. The personalized patient marketing, that comes once a individual is enrolled in the act. And then, you know, even care team outreach. Like I said, we're looking at data, we're stratifying that data, finding folks that might have gaps and get them, bend a provider, allow where they have chronic conditions that they might not be managing. And we're gonna reach out to those folks and get them engaged in care as well. I'm gonna pause there and see if the board has any questions on the services or model, or what we go into, what a proposal inside.
Yeah, the examples of the, where you kind of cater to employees and their time and need, I mean, before.
Absolutely. If you give an example of the school district I work with here in Maryland, you know, we launched Monday through Friday, scheduled 40 hours per week. We surveyed folks after their appointments. That's where we got that net promoters score you saw, to see about their experience, but also the feedback in this one school district. What we were seeing time again in the comments were, they were hopeful that we would be able to help us hours on Saturday, because folks were just saying how busy things were during the week. It would be nice if there was at least half a day on Saturdays where we could be open. And so our team worked with our providers and expanded, now we have a half day on Saturdays as well. Do you have any questions? Great.
I think they're ready for the proposal.
Okay.
That's right.
They're ready for the, very good for you. Okay, so now we're moving on to the proposal component. And so this first piece, as I mentioned earlier, we took census data from you all as well, you and Manuel. And we used that to map to an area of highest density. Okay, where can we put a health center? And, you know, in a 20-mile radius, we could cover as many folks as possible. And so in this one, you know, obviously, kind of at a high level, it's around that Pagantham area. And we had of your 830 folks, 762 of them within range. And based on that, we would have at least, in our staffing model, one advanced practice provider, so that's a nurse practitioner, a physician assistant, and then a medical assistant. You'll see a little bit later on, we have a decision we wanna make on how we're gonna handle the mental health component. But the APP, that advanced practice provider and medical assistant, would allow for a full scope of services. And, you know, it's as well as 40 hours of operation time. In our cost proposals, so as you can imagine, there isn't upfront facility investment. And that is relative to basically getting a space set to be a health center. So our team, we have full facility construction, real estate team. They did some initial projections that we presented to the district. And again, you know, it kind of breaks into two areas. The office space and conversion and the adapting of existing space. And then the other pieces, like the stocking of equipment, staff salaries, onboarding, training. So again, this is what our team conservatively estimated as a potential all-in on upfront costs. Now, what I caution everyone on is, as we looked at it, that the biggest variability, if I go back to the previous slide, is that office space converging or adapting existence space. That, when we confine the second generational, the generation medical space, or something that was a doctor's office, out in the community, then that actually brings down our potential cost weight. And so our team found this site investable to about $4,300 square feet. It is second gen medical space. And our team provided that, that, you know, we were originally projecting across both districts. So you all ending it well, 250 to 350K compared to the 200. So a total of 350, 250 to 350K to convert this space compared with, you know, what the original estimate. So, as I said to the board in May Endwell the other evening, now this is kind of where the rubber meets the road, you know, on these sites. You know, the risk in not moving forward sooner rather than later is you find a site that, you know, meets checks and boxes, you can get it at a lower upfront rate to convert it, and, you know, move the project forward. Obviously, we would need to go in the contracting, or in a letter of intent to move on a property. But this is available, and as I mentioned, you know, Marathon will really partner with the districts to run the project relative to the conversion of the space permitting, you know, running the general contract bids. And then on the other end, once we've got the space built out, we can pass through these, our national discounted rates, furniture restrictions, equipment, to stop that center.
And Mark, did I mention the grant opportunities that aren't potentially available?
Yes, absolutely. So Christina and I have been working hard, I believe we've been successful in the state of Maryland, getting grant funding specifically for schools to go for the startup cost of these health centers. And so Christina and I have engaged with a resource that, you know, should you all want to, you know, continue to pursue this. Not that I can make any promises if I can, but we would pursue getting grant funding for the two school districts. And again, you know, most of the interest is coming from, from grant funding resources that are willing to put funds in play or creating access to primary care and mental health care. So again, that is something that Christina and I would explore if you all want. Or we will move forward with, if you all wanna move forward with this project. Christina, do you wanna add anything else there?
No, I just think, like you said, you had some familiar conversations, and so far the conversations sound really good. People seem interested in this concept, especially when it involves mental health.
So does this just, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Does this proposal, in the end, do we own the building or do you?
You would own the building, it would be your asset.
And there's an option possibly where you would own the building and we would lease it, correct?
There, so we, so you all would own all the assets based on the upfront start cost. We can, from a lease perspective, yes, we could hold that month of lease, like in that previous scenario. You have the $4,000 and then pass that through to you all, or you all could hold this. We have a couple of different scenarios we could do there. But it would be your asset in this scenario.
Okay, thanks.
All right, just real quickly, this is an example of us being able to take, you know, kind of a space that was an office space, and really then change it into a health center. So just a picture, a couple of pictures there. And then the fees. So as you can see, and a couple of lineups are here, of a comprehensive primary care. And you can see, we can, this is above, down at the bottom, includes quite a bit, the staff, coverage, you know, facility cost, so on and so forth, that's all baked in there. And we go out for 12 months, that's, you know, the $20,000. We do pass through pharmacy vaccination labs. So Christina has our pricing on all of those pieces, what the per unit cost is. So we could do an analysis and make sure you all can get it cheaper than what we can get, but, yeah, this is that. So again, you have that monthly fee that would be flat, not changing, at the $26,670. You would have, a variable would be pharmacy vaccinations and labs as incurred and passed through. And then, you know, just as an example on that, based on that site we looked at in the festival, $2,000. There's the option, which, and we presented these exact same options to May Endwell as well. There's the in-person mental health provider, so licensed provider, and that could be a licensed social worker, a licensed professional counselor, et cetera. You can see that's, and these are split costs with May Endwell. So you can see the licensed in-person mental health provider, you know, it's a bit more intensive than the work form mental health program we're able to offer. And then across this, and this pricing is inclusive of all of your employees, spouses, and dependents.
Who typically writes the grants, the grants that you found in the school or just not?
So we will typically collect the grants, we'll work with a third party.
Hey Mark, on the, you were talking on the previous couple of slides about one full-time equivalent for a nurse practitioner, physician assistant, one of the medical students, and one for the mental health. How does, I mean, one full-time equivalent, obviously you wanna have one person working the entire time, assuming that they want some time off, but how does that equate to when you have the lab folks who do the testing, the pharmaceutical folks to dispense drugs? Are, how, is that additional staff in regards to the?
So that's, we're able to do all of those things with the advanced practice provider. And the, obviously, the advanced practice provider, you know, there are laws in the state of need without dispensing. We have the collaborative physician in the state. But all of these, personally, we would be able to do with the, like the staff model of the programs. And then, thinking about the other part of the question, well, what do you do for coverage? You know, that is part of being a larger organization. We have lots of resources that we're implementing if, for whatever reason, a provider is going to be out. We also have that virtual piece that we can fill in there as well. So we are able to be operational even if a provider is out or on vacation, for instance. Okay, so we talked about, you know, what is the cost and what is the model? Now I would just kind of let the time to you all to talk about, okay, well, you know, what type of savings could this potentially create? And so you'll see in the big picture, we modeled a 1.71, five-year gross, 3 million, five-year gross savings. And then when we netted out the cost to the district, 1.2 million in savings. But I'm gonna tell you a little bit more about how we, how we got there. So again, we actually took in the data from the schools. And then we've got a, Marathon is an actual aerial team, we crunch the numbers. Essentially, what you see here is, this is what, you know, the district's spending would look like without the health center. Across categories, you have primary care, professional, non-primary care, that's specialist care. So specialists out in the community, labs, outpatient, non-ER, you know, urgent care, outpatient ER, and then medication. And then what we do is, we take both of these as special classes, based on other school districts we work with. And we say, in the first year, we anticipate being able to shift X percentage or X amount of cost from your, you know, claims environment, self-funded environment, into the health center. And so again, what this is saying, the year, the first year, you know, where we're ramping up and the engagement, we anticipate saving the gross of $155,000 in 2029. And that's across a unique engagement rate, so that's employees, spouses, and dependents, 27%, 28%. So it's not an unidealistic goal to attain, to get this type of savings. And then what we do from there is to project that over for five years. And so what you see on this one is, again, kind of those upfront startup costs, that is a facility investment, and employment achievement. And that we have, again, the cost for the health center, we have our funding opportunity. And then we're taking those savings, and I projected 155,000 if you're hoping. And we're taking that over to a five-year period, we're, you know, assuming a 2% to 3% increase in engagement across employees, spouses, dependents per year. And that's what gets us to the, you know, 3 million in gross savings. We take out the cost of the health center, sorry, take out the cost of the health center, and that's where we get to the 1.2 in, in net savings. Now, the last thing I'll say on this, and I'll pause, see the question we have is, so this is where the performance guarantees come in place. So we would work with you all, when, if we get to contract and put in performance guarantees around where we put fees and base relative to engagement. Again, I get to that 27%, 28% engagement to get the level of ROI. We'll also put it in place around patient and client satisfaction. If you as a client, are you satisfied with us as a vendor? The patients are they satisfied with us as a provider? Also, you know, outcome, so each band of work, screen names, folks win, diabetes, A12 over, and take this itself. So again, in this model, there's been a game on the vendor side to ensure that we're getting appropriate engagement, et cetera, to get this from you all. Questions there?
Mark, one thing I wanna add, I don't know if this is a spot we normally talk about, is, you know, we're talking about hard savings, we're looking at the claims, but there's also some soft savings that come along with this. Do you wanna just mention that?
Sure, yes, I probably should have a little bit earlier. E, as I mentioned, we work with quite a few school districts. One school district, we work with York Penn, which I've actually provided as a reference for E. They're a school outside of Philadelphia, PA. They did a study over a 8-week period, we did it one year with the health center, and the first year with, sorry, without the health center, and then one year with the health center. What they found was, you know, upwards of 16%, 17% decrease in absenteeism. And what they attributed it to was, you know, before, when folks were having to take a day off, they did get medical care. You know, they were having to take a full day off. Since they, you know, started their health pandemic, folks easily get to the health center, get in and out without having to take a full day or half day off. And so they literally see their absentee decrease, which also correlates to savings on, you know, bringing in substitutes. So that's, you know, that's just one area where, you know, not the direct payment saving, but there are other things we know are happening that are creating value for the district. Okay, so that, you know, the ROI, the savings behind it. One other thing I just wanna say, to ensure people are thinking is, that our members in your, in the community that have a primary care provider, you know, this is not man-think. It's not, you have to go to the Marathon Health Center. We believe in primary care. So if somebody has a provider that they've worked with for many years, that's great. You know, we want them to continue to use that. We know that there's a percentage of folks in the population that don't have a primary care at all. We know there's a percentage of folks that haven't been to a primary care in quite a while. So they're the low-hanging fruit, but then even the folks that, you know, have a primary care, they'll end up coming using our health center because they can get it same-day, next-day, if they are working care. Maybe it's quicker for them to get their lab work, taking care of, or they come in and get a prescription filled. And so folks will, you know, kind of supplement their standard care with our health center, but it's not guaranteed that folks uses. So the implementation of these, we're typically in around seven months for a project. We would dedicate, you know, resources to the school districts via a single point of contact for implementation, and really that's everything from, you know, getting the site set up, putting the implementation plan on IT, the council. site set up, putting the implementation plan on IT, the council staff, hiring and training. And then ultimately, it's opening of the health center, that's where we work with you all to make a big splash, have a board there, live and study, meet and greet the providers. And then really on a ongoing basis, supporting you all as a client, we have recording and data, marketing and engagement, adding potential services, physical therapy, other things that, as we go. So again, about a seven month time period from contract signing to the health center being open. And then the last thing I would say is, just because it's been part of the competition is, oh yeah, we've already been made, made initial groups working in getting this thing off the ground. If other employers join, other employers in the community that want to come and use this model, if you all, since you all would be the early adopters and it would be your health center, other employers would owe the districts an access fee. Typically, it's based on the number of members that come in, but that would go to you all as a credit and money to go and essentially go backwards offsetting your upfront capital costs. And I know that that's something of interest. The more folks we have in the center, the more we can kind of spread out those costs. And I think that that's something of interest and something to connect you with the issues of the task. So our next step from here, obviously we wanted to get in front of you all to have the opportunity to present this model. Our, our next step, we can, we'd be able to deliberate, I think, you know, what we heard from MAEDWELL was based on their deliberations, I think they would want to come together in both entities and speak with us and, you know, ensure kind of the plan across all groups. From there, we would, you know, need to look at the contract and move it forward, the site inspection and implementation. I have cooperated, our governance for our board, for in, in his scheme, I think that's important, you know, speaking about the school districts that have implemented this and the results they've seen. But, you know, other than that, here to support is, as additional questions come up, these are our, our next steps. Any questions?
A couple, Mark, apologies, so at the end there you mentioned about folks that already have the, their primaries, so this isn't necessarily a replacement for health insurance? Is it an add-on or type of?
Yeah, so this is just more access really from one of centralized facility, so that our employees would have access to, to that facility and priorities of that facility versus, yeah, you can go, and you still can go to your, your primary care physician. The health insurance plan, everything stays the same. The difference is, is where, where you're going to be in your care.
And we will take all of your specific health insurance, you know, the networks, and when we do need to get folks through roles, dermatology or what have you, we will use those in network providers. And so we, we access some technology that helps us find higher quality, always come out in network providers. And then we've helped work out my roads actually to have it in, where it gets to those.
And that actually goes nicely, and we've been educating the staff on is, you know, shopping around for services, this clinic will kind of do the work for people. So if they needed an MRI, they're going to be referred to be, you know, lowest cost, best outcome, instead of, well, we have an illness facility, so we're going to send it over there for the MRI and it costs $5,000. So this is a really nice compliment to the great work everybody's been doing.
That's right. We are not a part of a health carrier, we're not a part of a health system, so we have no ties or incentives. We get our, our, our loyalty is to find a patient, making sure that patient gets that positive, you know?
I had one.
And pretty much add is, the studies show when they've done surveys to doctors around the country, about 21 percent of services that happen are really unnecessary. A lot of that drives with specialist referrals. So what Mark's talking about is, they've got in consult services right within your visit, which is going to cut down on those costs as well. So if people don't have to be referred out, they'll be taken care of right at their visit, that's what's going to happen. So referrals are really going to be much more necessary.
Actually, I apologize, one of the, one of the, so as far as the return on investment, you really, it was 28 percent of the, the five population you were targeting to try to get into, was that the number that you?
That's correct. 28 percent of the employees, spouses, and dependents, we get that number for year one. And then what I've also provided, for I didn't, put in this presentation to absolutely, to make sure we shared out, is, and we look at utilization sensitivity, so what happens if you get less than that? What does that do to the referral investment? What happens if you get more than that? What does that do to the referral investment? But the benchmarks are built on our K through 12 integration partners, we feel confident we can get that, that priority.
And something to keep in mind is, because you have a high deductible plan, if someone's going for a sick visit, they're spending about $120 to $150 out of their health savings account on that visit, whereas the fair market value for the visit at this clinic would be, you know, $30 to $40. So if someone's trying to save that money for retirement, this is a really good incentive and it's going to be really good care.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Mark and Christina, we appreciate all the information that you shared tonight. I think, you know, we'll probably, next step will be, you know, we'll have further conversations with MAEDWELL. And then, you know, assuming things continue to head in the right direction, we will bring others from the board, both boards together, I think, to, to have a further conversation about what this could look like.
Very good. We appreciate your time and thank you so much for having us on this.
Thank you. Sorry for the technical difficulties.
It's all right, I was just kidding camera. Thank you all. Have a good rest of the.
Thank you. If there's any questions, just shoot them my way, we'll get an answer.
Okay, easy there, thank you.
Take care.
So we're going to skip over to the gym floor discussion. I'm going to bring a little levity here. So a number of you reached out and inquired about, you heard what the plan was for the gym floor, so I'm going to ask some questions about the status of the floor. What you know about the floor, you can tell us about the condition of the floor, what the plan is and what the options are.
So you want me to start and just give some background, just so folks can kind of see the, the big picture? So the last time that we redid the court, we did a sanding on the court, well, the court is the original court that has been there for numerous years. And the contractor basically said, this is it, there's no, there's no more, no more sanding that can be done, you know, we're down to where the nails are going to start popping out to the floor, there's cracked floors, so on and so forth, there's a bunch of dead spots. So prompted that piece of knowing that the gym needed some updates anyways, that we tried to, we got this in this last, previous, the last project that we went out to. So that process happens and, you know, we've got the gym project that's, that's being drawn by our architects and engineers, and we also have the music suite and then work to the pool. So there's a significant amount of work that, in this project that was being submitted to State Ed. So what's gone on at State Ed over the past probably four or five years is they've allowed, they've allowed third-party reviews, which has sped up the process for approvals, which is the, the longest wait time of back and forth between architects and engineers with the State Ed facilities folks. That number jumped to 30 weeks, which is outrageous, what honestly. Part of the reason that is, is they stopped doing third-party reviews at the state level. So in our situation, because we were a, a district with an indigenous mascot, we were allowed to potentially obviously see if we could bump up the timeline to be able to get this part of the project done. Wouldn't be able to get the other piece done at this time, the pool and the music suite, only the gym because it had, you know, indigenous mascot local in the middle. So fast forward, we still don't have approval. We believe we're going to get approval any day, but there's a lot, the state promises a lot of things that don't come true. So here's some of the things that I think are important to consider. We can't, number one, we can't sand that floor out again. We could re-coach the floor, but the concern, I think the overall general concern for the student athletes is the playability of the floor. Is it going, is it going to make it through the season even with a re-coat? Are we going to have to re-coat before this season, before the next season, and so on and so forth? Based on what the contractor's saying is, the, the re-coat is probably going to make it look shiny and new, but the reality is really not going to change the playing surface much. So it's going to be, it's going to be slippery. So thinking about the performance of our student athletes, we obviously have a very successful program, which is volleyball, what's the best case scenario to where, for them to be able to compete at the high level if they can be there? Ultimately, yeah, we all, I think, would love to have the kids play in OFA. I just, my concern is, is it going to be to the level that they need to make them through the season? Then we also have another season coming up, basketball season, which, wrestling, which will get heavy usage as well. So those are kind of some of the, the factors. Can we move the project to, to next summer? We most certainly could. Some things to think about in, in construction. So for example, for this year, graduation went really late, right? So we wouldn't have been able to get in that gym until after graduation if we had approval, which we did not and still don't. That gives us timeline of basically July and August, and a couple of weeks of August before practice is there again, to be able to get, to get back into those, those facilities. So we're on a really condensed timeline when it comes to construction. So factors in with that as well, and your, next summer, we'd be looking at, if we pushed this project off, we'd be looking at roughly about $16 million worth of capital work that would happen out within the district, roofing, pool, all these, all of these pieces. So when you're trying to jam all that into a couple of months, what naturally happens is pricing starts to go up, right? Because the contractors have to pay two and three times to their employees if they're working on the clock, extended hours overtime, so on and so forth. So that's something that we have to be cognizant of and, and keep into consideration, knowing that we have to stay somewhere in the framework of, of what the referendum was when it comes to that budget. The other piece too is labor, in terms of getting the, the number of labor, the laborers that you need to be able to do $16 million worth of different areas of work becomes somewhat of a concern. The construction companies are like most, which is why we have a building trades program because we're hopeful to, to feed those programs or to those companies as well so that they have, have more workers. So that's an additional thought to be concerned as well. Can we do it? Absolutely. Can we wait till next summer? Absolutely. Is it going to be ideal for the level that you guys want to play at? I can't guarantee that. That's the concern. I think that it, it's going to be probably about what it is right now, which is great. I think that, you know, I just want to give you some historical perspective of projects. So another example too, when we did the work at Appalachian, we were able to, fortunately, we were able to work kind of throughout, throughout the year in different phases. We had to move staff around in the building in order to be able to accomplish the construction pipelines, to be able to get that, that project completed. Had we just tried to do everything in the two months in the summer, we'd still be working over there trying to get, to get that project completed. So these are factors that just come into play. I certainly, oh, I, I look at the faces here, I know that there's tremendous amount of passion around, around the volleyball program, I get that, I'm glad that you're here to advocate for yourselves. Just want to give you that kind of full picture of, you know, this is where we're at. And again, we still have approval, it's getting later and later every day, when you talk about trying to order, you know, entire gym floor, those are very temperature sensitive. We can't just bring it in here and stick it in a warehouse because it'll probably start doing this on us and that'll be a waste of money. So those decisions are really upon us at this point, I think. So I'll kind of turn it over to the board with any questions or comments or thoughts, because we've had, we've had some back and forth conversations about this and, you know, we're, there's, there's no perfect answer, I guess, is, is the, the point I'm trying to make. If we can get playable, we'll have to have people at it. And that's hopeful what we can do, but again, I think, I don't think we can guarantee that based on the condition that it started at.
My question has always been a clarification. So I know a little bit about it, not an awful lot, but standing the floor down is different than resurfacing. And if we sanded it down literally to the wood and took all the varnish off of that kind of, I wanted the impression we can resurface it a number of times. That's my understanding of that, is right. Let me ask one question. It's, if it's only been resurfaced once after the sanding, I would just wonder if another resurface is doable, or even two of it was to spill into the, just as well.
Yeah, so it, it can be re-coated, I reached out again to the, the foreign contractor, he's certain, again, he can come in and re-coat it, but what he's basically saying is, I can maybe look, check in pretty, it'll be a little bit better, but then quickly it's going to be right back to what it is, just because of the age of the floor that we're dealing with. So that's really the basis of it. If they were to start the project, I think the contractor's timeline would be mid-September. He said he would need five weeks for the floor. That puts us obviously significantly into, to October. Maybe get really lucky and it's only four. So those are all, you know, those are all factors too of, you know, I know that Mr. Holliday's already had conversations with, with the coach, you know, already had conversations with the PE department. You know, majority of the fall, we try to be outside as much as possible. I think they've got somewhat of a plan in place, but again, nothing is, is perfect or, or ideal, you know, in general with this, with this project. And then your question first?
Are there, I guess, where else, what other gym options are available? It's like the, the middle, the elementary school, right, isn't large enough to, I guess it was more of a gym, rec, rec gym space at this point in time, as I understood, it wasn't possibly a regulation size, eventually it was built.
I don't know the answer to regulation size in terms of volleyball. I think practice wise, it would be, it would be suitable. Obviously a middle school gym, I think that we've had, had some tournaments where we used both middle school and, and high school.
But Appalachian's a.
Appalachian would be, yeah, I mean, you could try to practice there, but that would be definitely.
I don't believe that really has its slims. I double checked that, I don't know if there would be like standards going up, so.
So what exactly would happen if we were to go ahead with this project, like, there would be no volleyball, or how would volleyball be?
So if we were to go ahead with this project in the, in the high school gym, the middle school gym would become the primary spot for volleyball. That's really, that'll be it. I mean, I think probably occasionally maybe some modified practices could happen, if OE assets needed, but I think that based on the fact that we only have one sport, indoor sport in the fall, that, that gym, you know, will just be, kind of get used around the clock for practices for that though, right?
I know a little concerned about the upcoming, the tournament in September, maybe a public school, I don't share. So that's not possible, that would be, is there, could there be alternate sites for that? Like I was thinking even maybe going outside the school, boys and girls club or something?
We did do the boys and girls club last year.
We did do some?
Yep.
In addition to the high school?
In addition to the high school, yep.
In addition to the high school, yep. So, that is the asset that was possible.
And I've been at that tournament, and it's really a dynamic, it's great, and the program is really excellent. So, I mean, to try to work things out would be dangerous, I think. I mean, I understand, we have to make concessions. Who knows, even if you wait till spring, we might run into a lot of the same problems again. But I know the board goes very strongly about supporting the normal program.
I think that, you know, the conversation earlier about grant tuition moving up is doubtful. You know, because June 21st, we could be able to get in there and, I think, go on and get demos and grant to redo. You know, that gives us more time.
Just trying to rationalize. I want to add to this, when we expedited the approval that happened in the summertime.
Oh, yes.
Now, we're expediting it, and it's happening in the middle of the fall. Had we not expedited it, we wouldn't get an answer until the spring. So, therefore, what would we have done? We would just resurface the gym in the fall and in the winter.
Yeah, the expedited process piece, we originally don't know. You're not gonna be able to expedite this project. So, it wasn't, it wasn't as if we had ran that up the chain. Ultimately, I've made a lot of phone calls at the state level to get us to that point. But, you're right, had it been expedited and June 30th, if we got an approval, then, you know, that's a different, certainly a different scenario.
Corey, what about the mascot issue that has to come off the gym floor by June 30th? How does, what kind of penalty would it be if we, we were pushed out next year until we got it done? Would, you know, do you have any information on that at all?
I don't know. There's always the, you know, the threat from the state that withhold funds from you, but...
Even though that it's taken them forever to approve this project?
I think it's heavily doubtful, yeah. Probably what, he had mentioned the contractor that he would just paint us out with color over it, but he didn't wanna re-sand it by any means because of dead spots, you know, that are gonna be bad.
And rationalizing, if we had expedited it, we would have received approval so that we would re-coat it in the fall, probably in the winter. Yeah, I'd leave it that way.
There's opportunities to coat it, or coat it, is there opportunity for a, I'll call it like the ice cream style, right? You put a vinyl river hawk in the center and then coat over top of there the train to Rock and Roll.
Oh, I'm not sure.
What is it, you know, the other question that comes up is safety.
Yeah.
If, you know, I'm not an expert, and you said talking here, the floor, people who resurface it. I think there's a lot of gym floors around that are past sanding down every now and then, that are resurfaced. See if it works out okay.
Depends on the footwear that the kids are using too. That's the, how much traction they have on that surface one way or the other.
Yeah, this, no, this isn't the one, it's been sanded multiple times over the years. Noted, it's just, it's just at that point, we're so thin now, but it's just, nothing, no matter what you put on there, it's just gonna be, you know, you're not gonna get a good outcome. But playable, probably, we're just gonna have to probably coat it several times if we can fit that in.
And that's about ten thousand dollars each time.
Yeah.
And you're guessing at least two times?
I would say at least two times.
And then that would also affect the other sports in the winter, you know?
Yeah, because we'll have to have a window of time to coat it before, before the winter seasons start. So, we just have to figure that out and schedule it, because you have to stay off it for a certain number of days and...
They have spent it out a little bit, depending on what material they use, it is quicker down. But, yeah, you have to stay off it by time.
Right, do you know how long it takes to stay off?
Two to five days.
Yeah, it's usually, so we try to when we've done it, have the company here on like a Thursday, Friday, sanding and doing everything Friday, Monday or so, the weekend is no on it. And then on Monday, typically, depending on community and stuff, you're good to go. It used to be two weeks, and that process has changed.
I saw, so one of the board members asked about the equipment for the renovation project. Can we still try and get the materials now, once we get approved and put it in storage, so that we're not paying another price come next year?
Yeah, I think we were, our better bet is to hold on the order, because we just, we don't have the temperature-controlled facilities that they have for the hardwood floor.
Because they have to be really close to the temperature, because I mean, like, town when we go has that great huge storage facility, a lot of it has to be mixed control. I mean, I think as far as that's concerned, we could reach out to the community about storage.
Yeah, this is based on what the contractor's saying, that, you know, either he can get it if we're gonna do it later, that gives him significant amount of time. But he just didn't think it made a lot of sense to, if you're not gonna do it in September, then might as well hold the, hold the order.
Do we have any idea what the uptick's gonna be from an inflationary standpoint? Is that if we wait to order that in the spring or whenever we're supposed to?
That's hard to say, because I'm watching the stock market the last couple of days. I don't know, I wouldn't think significant, you know, uptick as far as that goes, but then again, things change in a hurry, I think.
And from a financial standpoint, resurface, refinishing the floors and then postponing the project, would that come out of general fund?
Resurfacing, yeah, yeah. So, we'd have some additional costs there in resurfacing. And then we'll, we'll have to play by ear if we need to do it a third time. It's really just, can you squeeze it in with all the activity that it gets between youth sports and, you know, regular season sports?
Depending on the decision.
Next year? Yeah, yeah.
And there's...
That would be the goal, would be to try to get in there. Oh, you're saying, over here, yeah. We'll probably, because we have them scheduled to resurface, some of the other gyms will probably just have them starting this one.
The other thing, just to put all the options in, if we could, let's say we chose to move forward with the project, there's no guarantee the project would be done before, which is...
Entirely, no. He claims he could get the floor in five weeks max. So, if he started the middle of September, it's a third week, I was telling him. Yeah, the baskets and stuff would have to come later.
Brian, is there grant money associated with athletics out there in New York State to help school districts like ours that are in this dilemma?
I have to look into something, I could certainly find out.
So, it's the kind of consensus, we'll re-coat and see how it goes and try and stay on top of it. And if we record it again, we'll try and figure it out.
I think so. If we get approval until later, we'd be doing this.
I agree. Stay very alert, very on top of this whole project, when the time comes, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be a busy summer. Okay, we'll do that.
I will, yeah, I'll bunch of data, the schedule of it, yes, you know? We are doing the middle school gym coming up, so we'll just have to coordinate high school first.
Okay, district business, and I do wanna take these one at a time, again, to have, I feel like we glossed over some pretty important topics. So, 10.1, approval of the resolution confirming the budget and reviving of the tax, new motion.
So moved.
Discussion, any discussion?
Lyda?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
10.2, approval of the resolution confirming the budget and reviving of the tax for the library, school library, new motion.
So moved.
Discussion?
Just clarity purposes, that is entirely for coal burning on a frigging Appalachian library, exactly.
10.3, resolve, a foundation, Jill Benidam, the Board of Education, approved the following CSC, CSC committees, 2024, 2025 school year, new motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? A little walkover, Ruth.
Two? Do you think of vote?
That's two. You're tied.
Lyda?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Yes.
10.4, five recommendations, superintendent of schools to appoint impartial hearing officer, list as presented. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
One of those are impartial hearings, I don't think that's a loose pass.
There's a person.
Yeah, so it's, from a specialist standpoint, there's things where you can have an impartial hearing that happens, you know, through the process. So, a person from the district is represented in that hearing process.
All right. Lyda?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Yep.
John?
Okay, we gotta do public comment, there were a number of people who signed in, and some people who wanted to have a comment. Kaylin Terry? Kaylin Terry?
It's all right.
Okay, I first just wanted to ask, like, for clarification on the plan for the gym, do you think you're gonna be pushing to just re-coat it, or you're not sure yet?
Or to re-coat it.
Just to re-coat, okay, thank you.
Easy enough, right? Do you have a fan?
Real quick, you guys haven't took the window out. So, for you, for the quick responses, and emails, and board, for all your support and asking the questions, really appreciate it, so thank you guys.
Kaylin Terry?
Hi. I just wanted to say thank you, because I was actually pleasantly surprised that you kind of took all of the points that we had made and answered all the questions on them. I think that was very helpful and reassuring, especially for the nine seniors that we have that have grown up in that gym. I'm gonna be grateful, so thank you.
Dan North?
Good to meet you.
Anybody else? All right, so I just wanna say that I am very appreciative. If you guys don't understand, you know, we don't run the school district, but Kreen runs the school district. He makes his decision, he was open to suggestions that came forward. I thought the discussion was great. I thought being open-minded and kind of looking at different options. I'm happy that we got to this point. And I think it's a good way for all of us to kind of get together in an early board meeting and work together in front of the public, come to a resolution that hopefully will satisfy a lot of things. So, thank you for your input from the community, thank you for open-mindedness, for listening to all the questions and concerns and answering them directly, very appreciate it. Action summary number 12, item, we talked about the website update, changes in...
That's what I was gonna do.
12.2, RFP for legal services. Is that discussion already? Yeah, this is a discussion. So, request for proposal for legal services. And we'll want to start the discussion.
Well, I think for my eight years on the board, going on nine now, we've asked the districts superintendent, considered some other individual, other individual groups out there, just give us some feedback on, on what their proposal is in order to service us in a legal capacity. I'm familiar with several of them, and I'd like to be educated more about, you know, rest of the board, understand what other groups are out there to support us besides the ones we've been dealing with over the past nine, you know, eight years that I've been on the board. I know so much, we had a long history with the district. But there are also other individual groups out there that are very good attorneys, that we have this great counsel. That's all, we'd be interested in seeing who else is out there.
So, just for clarification, the reorg, we've accepted Farrar and Ferenza, which is Farrar and Ferenza bought out Hogan and Serszynski. So, it's Farrar and Ferenza, and Coffin and Gerhardt are probably the two primary ones. There are individuals who do some work as well. I think one thing to consider in this is that we also have the ability to use other firms the way that the language is approved in the, at the July meeting. So, it's not just, Farrar and Ferenza, we can reach out to other firms to get a different opinion, if needed.
Okay, thank you.
Difference is you're just not our retainer, is one thing we are currently with. But if you'd like to, if you'd like to get some other information through that process, we could certainly do that.
Yeah, what do we, like, just renew a contract every year of this?
Pretty much, yeah, it's a service. So, I mean, technically, we do an RFP.
If you wanted to go up for an RFP, probably try to chat about it over pretty tight. And we need to...
Yeah.
Things like legal services, auditors, construction managers, architects would be the ones that I think we should consider. Obviously, we just approved a contract, so architects probably will pay third process in the design phase and try to get it approved. But I'd be interested in legal services, construction manager, and auditor person.
You said last time that RFPs are different.
Poses can do it, and they have a service that'll do it. We just have to be very specific how long we would like it in there. I'm sure we can get our hands on some.
Is it possible to collect some data from the other school systems in the 15-component poses and see who they're using, and just see if there is some other groups out there that we could add to our list, and, you know, if they're getting good results and working very hard for the district? I'd be curious to hear who else is using, you know? That would be helpful.
I think that's what the RFP does, is I kind of vision idea.
Right.
It's out there.
12.3, survey follow-up, this is something that I wanted to, next one discussion.
Yeah, we just showed that. I mean, I wasn't on the initial thought, or why we had to see the very reasoning behind it or anything like that, but I know we shared these all the last month. And I just wondered, I mean, what we're gonna do more, that we're gonna have an action plan, we're gonna have a subcommittee look at those deeper, I mean, you know, it'd just be, I think we just did all that work. We're ashamed not to follow up on it and see if there's anything we can learn from it, or anything that we need to do differently, or whatever. I know we're gonna present it to teachers on Superman's Conference Day, so Thursday at school, what the plans to do, what else with it. I mean, it's a pretty big project, right?
Yeah, so we have administrative retreat tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday, we're gonna dig into it and look at those pieces and look at what's the outcomes, what was positive, and then what are some areas that weren't as positive that we can incorporate into the work that we're doing, and obviously through staff as well. I've had those same communications.
We were also talking about being in our strategic planning as a board, about just trying to coordinate it so we can all be together to talk about those results.
Yeah, we originally had August 26th, I think the time just wasn't gonna work, so we have to figure out a different time, though probably in the evening, but that would be part of the discussion with leadership and the board, in terms of that, what are the next steps that we take there? in terms of that, what are the next steps that we take that in that process.
And you know, they said the numbers were average of what you're doing, or whatever, I didn't see like a lot to me. I don't know, so that's something to talk about.
Yeah, sure.
I think we understand is the participation rate, the higher the participation rate, the more accurate, and something would be good. There's a lot of interesting information, but almost likely we need to commit to that.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I was saying. Anyway, that was all, okay.
So we have some next steps that during opening day, then we have our retreat, and we can dig into a little bit.
Yep, sounds good.
10.4, our next meeting, August 26th. Discussion about that? Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.